To the salary account. So the total of seven thousand on transfer. Equals forty-eight thousand transfer money into the existing one thousand, zero, four, zero, zero.
Mister, this is only half a year left, do you need that money? Not done.
As we allocated the forty thousand to be used for the rewrite, we don't know what kind of expenses besides, you know, obviously, we have the zoning officer hired. But there may be outside things that we have to acquire to get that preferred transfer, that much into that fund. And then at the end of the year, see where we're at after six months. And next year to give us a gauge on whether we need to, you know, lower or raise it.
Well, it's frowned upon if we use the salaries to pay. Like if you're saying that we may have to do something, we need to leave some of that money in that line if it's stormwater or if it's zoning code because the auditors don't want to see us paying something out of the salary line for stuff like that.
So what would do?
You understand?
We have, we have, we have line items for those expenses separate.
Okay.
So I'm glad you pointed that out. But yes, I'd like to make sure the position is funded properly. Um, especially when you put worker comp in there, uh, and the various other things that we have to pay in addition to the salary.
So why exactly would we need to transfer that much money? We had a zoning inspector and, um, he left for various reasons. But he was, you stated earlier that he was contracted for thirty-five dollars an hour. Cause we were using a, um, he was actually working for somebody else and contracted us at that price. We hired this new guy in at considerable less money. So why do we need to transfer forty-eight thousand dollars to cover the expenses? It was already there for a guy we already hired for over twelve dollars less an hour. Why do we got to transfer so much money?
Number one, it's only eight dollars an hour. Yeah, but number two, we have to pay all the other fees, uh, along with his fees. It was thirty dollars and they covered it as very staffing, they covered it all. The second thing is we did not.
Oh, so that, so back up. So the comment, so the comment made before was misleading then. In that, that you stated that we were paying thirty-five dollars an hour for John through a subcontractor. And this guy was hired in, in the low twenties. Let me finish. But so you made that comment, but that's actually misleading because now you're saying, well, the twenty-two dollar an hour right is not, number is not right. Cause also we had to pay workers comp and insurance and all those other stuff we gotta pay. So you drew a picture below before that wasn't quite correct. Okay.
Uh, Mister McGloffen, you were wrong. Um, and Miss Edwards just said during your speech, I said thirty dollars. And you guys saw the thirty dollar, you know, you knew what John was, uh, working for was thirty dollars. So it was, I did not make a misleading statement. And so, and you know, you know, so.
So in, in the, in the amount that John was paid, being paid is not the part I'm arguing about. The part I'm arguing, finding disbelief in is the fact that John was working for a higher number. We hired this new guy at a lower number and you said that we're saving money. Well, now we're talking about the budget and all of a sudden we got but forty-eight thousand dollars out of other funds over to cover his salary for the same work being done.
Let's, let's, let's back up there for a minute. Uh, John did not work the number of hours that we were hoping that he would work each week. If you look at the total cost, number two.
Getting things done, right? He was, but he was meeting the demands, if people called him, he was answering it. Correct. He was not getting, working a number of hours, but when somebody needed zoning issue, whatever here this past summer, things would get taken care of.
Uh, to a certain extent, yes, but we're finding out that we had other things that needed to be taken care of and they were not. And I can't talk any further than that because it's an HR issue. We can talk about it.
Okay.
Number two, number two, you've got to understand that we're not transferring the money there to pay this man any more money than what you hired him for. So it don't matter if you put a hundred thousand there. But we're consolidating the money. So the money is correctly and adequately able to manage that employee. And we have rollover at the end of the year. It doesn't matter if we leave it in separate funds or we put it into the salary fund.
Just to be clear on that, um, um, it can be adjusted again during the year while we look at it. Um, because we may run short because we got this new employee, we may run short on the Medicare line or the Oprah's line or the BWC line. So if you put it in the salary right now, okay, but you may have to take some of it out to cover some of the shortages that we didn't calculate for having that new employee on those two, um, on Medicare, Oprah's and BWC. So there is additional funds that we have to pay for this new employee since he is the hired employee and not a contractor. So Medicare, Oprah's and BWC will have to have. But our forty-eight can stay there for right now, but it may come down the line where we should probably, and we could refine it as it goes along to put more money in there. But right now it's okay to go ahead and put it right there for now, but we may have to refine it down the line. Is that clear or understand or is it confusing or what? Okay. I just wanted to point that out.
And that's, that's what I've asked the trustees to do.
All right. Do we have any other appropriations that we need to deal with?
Three more, so I'll be as expedient as I can be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right Tracy, twenty-one oh thirty, this, this resolution. Um, we need to, uh, fund the, as, as the fiscal officer pointed out, that we were low on funding for the code enforcement position. So, uh, to transfer funds, we have to transfer funds from an account into uh, the line item for the code enforcement. That line item is um, one thousand, one, three, zero, one, nine, zero, zero, four, oh, one. So what I propose is we transfer nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents out of line item, one thousand, one, three, zero, three, six, zero, zero, four, zero, zero. Which we've already taken seven thousand, uh, out of that account for the, 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 uh, zoning officer. But that leaves an amount of nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars, fifty cents. And I request that that be transferred into one thousand, one, three, zero, one, nine, zero, zero, four, zero.
Description, coming from?
Coming from one thousand, one, three, zero, three, six, zero, zero, four, zero, zero.
Description, not number?
Oh, contracted service, um, zoning director planning.
Can I make a comment? Um, we also have to be careful with this zoning, the code enforcement, I'm sorry, code enforcement position because the trustees approved the resolution that he only worked so many hours. And you hired him, he only worked so many hours on code enforcement. So, you know, dividing it fifty-fifty may be okay, but somebody just needs to watch that. Because according to the resolution that says he only worked fifty percent, not fifty percent. There's so many certain hours that he works in the resolution. So we just have to make sure that's being stuck, kept by, you need to adjust the resolution.
That's a very, that's a very good point Tracy. So what I have is I have that employee filling out their time sheet based on what department they're working in for the hours that they do. So on his time sheet, it'll go road or it'll go code enforcement. So we, we follow that guideline exactly how you just said.
Yeah, I mean, I have, uh, but see, I have conflicting things because when I do, uh, I'm not checking the times or anything, but I, when I do the payroll schedule that the trustees approve says he's fifty, row, fifty percent row, fifty percent, um, code enforcement. But if you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Even though he maybe fifty-fifty, those, the fifty percent hour could be more than what the resolution is saying he could be. So I just need that to be looked at. So when the auditors come in, they say, well, you have a resolution that says you're only supposed to work this many hours on the code enforcement. You know, whether you split it up fifty-fifty according to your schedule, that may not be meeting the resolution. So our schedule may, may not be compatible to the resolution. So that may need to be looked at as well.
Yep. We'll, we'll look at it at the end of the year, this year. And, and, and right now, as you know, the code enforcement alters out on, uh, injury leave. So we don't have an estimated date of when he's coming back. So, so the, uh, you know, thank goodness we have a zoning officer that knows how to handle the code enforcement complaints. So he handled three himself today.
So is, is the nine thousand eighty-seven fifty, is that the only transfer to fund the code enforcement issue?
Yes.
And also, and also the resolution for the, the new zoning has, he has, uh, limited hours as well. So somebody has to watch that.
Okay.
And just, we watch the fifteen hundred hour mark for all firefighters as well.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, the last couple, uh, transfers, I think this would be number twenty-one dash oh three one. This, uh, deals with the cemetery fund. Um, and this is where I need your help, uh, fiscal officer, Edward. Um, we need to transfer funds out of the, out of the revenue account.
So it's not really, it's a, so it's really that we're going to use the funds and I have to, that means we're increasing our revenue. So that means I have to go to the county and tell them for the cemetery fund, we're increasing it. So what you need to tell me is how much you want to take out of the revenue, um, to put into the appropriation. I need the total amount first. And then that's what I will tell the county that we're moving. And then I need to break out for what you want to appropriate where.
Okay. Thank you. So trustees, in that line item, um, for cemetery, you, you have a total revenue amount presently of four thousand, one hundred, eighty-nine dollars, fifty-one cents. Um, I would like to request that you transfer, um, four thousand total leaving a, an amount of one eighty-nine, fifty-one in the revenue appropriation account. Uh, and the, and then the deposit of those four thousand dollars of funds will be as follows. Um, I ask that you put one thousand dollars into code number two oh four one. And trustees, this is on page six of, well, two oh four one, four, one, zero, three, three. Sorry about that. Two oh four one, four, one, zero, three, two, three. Zero, 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 zero. Repairs and maintenance, one thousand dollars. The next, uh, transfer would be two thousand dollars into, uh, into fund two, zero, four, one, four, one, zero, three, six, zero, 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 zero. And that's two thousand dollars. Contracted services. And that would be your, your, uh, your person that digs our graves and then levels them up after the burial is settled. And then our last, uh, uh, item to transfer into, the remaining one thousand dollars is transferred into two, zero, four, one, four, one, zero, three, six, zero, zero, six, zero, two. Contracted services, pre-sterminator. Um, one thousand, that's just to get started because we have multiple trees that have been determined that, that are dying from within. But we can't afford a visitor to the cemetery to get hit in the head or their car. Or we, we've got some tombstones that have been damaged due to the old trees that, that either have to be removed or we have to do some heavy cutting to preserve what's there.
Can't the, um, can't the A guys, the A guys we have on the road department, can't they go over there and cut trees?
They can cut some trees, but anything above a certain height, we don't have a lift. We don't have the certification.
Cut at the bottom and let it fall. You cut at the bottom of the tree, you know, and it falls over. You don't have to go up near to cut it.
But you have all the tombstones in the, uh, where all the trees are, so you can't damage the tombstone. So we gotta worry about, because we are responsible for maintaining the tombstones as well.
Okay.
And I prefer to not damage a tombstone and, 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 and prevent those trees from falling during a windstorm. And we get a broken off tombstone already. And that's happening. So that's transferred, uh, for the resolution twenty-one dash oh three one. The last is what we talked about in the work session, and I'd like to have, uh, Miss Edwards work with us on this. Uh, obviously it was pointed out to us that the tax collection fee account for the general, the road, the fire and the police are not adequate. And the audit fees with the state of Ohio audit is not adequate as well. If you trustees want to look at this and defer it to the next meeting, um, my question to you, fiscal officer Edwards, is this a line item that can be deferred? Or is this something that has to be acted on before the end of the month?
The audit fees in some cases, since we just got an invoice, we need to look at the audit fees. The tax collection can be done because we haven't got our second, we don't get our second, um, settlement until October. It can be done like I did this year's a few, a month ago or two meetings ago. I can do that later. That's not critical. It's the audit fees that's the issue.
Do we have a, do we have a thirty day pay, pay, um, option on the, on the state audit bill?
Well, this one through Ju- June thirtieth. I mean, I think it's June thirtieth, let me look. I don't have it in front of me. I think it's, it's a May, it's a May, it's for the May statements, it's June thirtieth.
Okay. And your, your trustees don't meet until July sixth? So, um, did you state, uh, I don't have that bill in front of me either, but did you say it was something like three thousand or some or forty?
I think it's twenty-one. I think I have the email. I think it was twenty-one hundred and I can give you if I find the email real quick.
Well, I have an option that could take care of that possibly if you want to look at it. But look to what you're researching for.
And it needs, you know, it's gonna need to go, I don't know how many until we close out the audit. I don't know how many more, um, bills we'll get, you know, they haven't told us when they'll be done with the audit.
Well, uh, let, if, if, if it's twenty-one hundred and we, if the trustees pass the resolution, get you passed this bill and we have to address it month by month going forward. I would like you trustees to look at page two of twelve. The line item of one thousand, one, two, zero, um, three, two, two, three, zero, one, four. Um, the amount of money in that account sits presently at three thousand dollars, nothing spent or encumbered. This is, the description on this is, um, garbage and trash removal recycling program. And as you all are aware, uh, and the emails have been sent by the city of Dayton to each of you trustees. The pay as you grow program that we were, we were working so hard on has now been discontinued by the city because they've determined after a study that it was not feasible. I had that money set aside to help with the upfront advertising of trying to educate all of our, our residents for, uh, recy- the recycling program. So if you want to help Tracy pay this bill, I would like to see you transfer three thousand dollars out of account one thousand, dash, one, two, zero, dash, three, two, two, dash, three, zero, one, four. And transferring into one thousand, one, one, zero, um, three, eight, one, one, zero. Where is, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, um.
Eight, one, four.
Yeah, one, 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 zero, three, one, four, dash, zero, 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 zero. And that, that gives, you know, uh, allows Tracy to pay that bill.
Okay, so I have, um, in your email, you have all the percentages, but yes, it was, um, that was including, that bill was including the UAM fees as well as the auditor fees. So those are two different line items.
Okay, okay. Well, I just want to make sure you have enough money in that account to at least pay whatever portion is for the tax collection fees.
And actually the road, it was the road department currently, right now, the road department and the lighting fund that didn't have enough money currently. There's, you know, down the road, um, we'll have more, but if you want to pay it that way, as long as it comes out of that line, that's fine, as long as I have, um, something that says you want, where you want to take the money out of.
So trustees, this would be twenty-one dash.
Oh, three, two.
Two oh three, two.
Thank you very much Tracy. Um, and that's the end of the transfers that I can see at the present time that I asked you for the meeting, you know, to discuss.
Okay.
I also have one, one, two, that has to be done, that should have been done a while ago. For the fire fund. Do you want that one as well?
Yeah, why not?
That would be twenty-one dash oh, three, three. And it's for fire fund and for line, line item, two, one, 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 dash, two, two, oh, dash, two, two, nine, dash, one, four, oh, one. And it's really, it's really increasing from the, um, from the revenue, increasing, um, that line item from a zero amount and adding three thousand dollars to it. And I already have this written out. I just have you sign it and we can vote on this. And the other one is two, one, 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 dash, two, two, oh, dash, three, six, oh, dash, zero, 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 zero. And it's moving the current appropriation of seven hundred and seventy, uh, dollars. And it's moving up to three thousand dollars. That one is for, the, the first one was for, um, contractor services, the fourteen oh one, and the second one is for, um, TELDO. We need to increase those lines in approved budget.
And, and, and what I heard you say is you're taking the new revenue to transfer to those two. You're taking them out of the unencumbered revenue of the fire fund, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So you're increasing the appropriation from seven seventy to three grand?
Yes, on, on, on the TELDO one, and that's line two, one, 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 dash, two, two, oh, dash, three, six, oh, dash, zero, 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 zero. It just doesn't seem right. Let me, I thought we have a special line for TELDO. And the fire fund. My last four just didn't sound right to me. I thought I had it correctly. I apologize. Two, two, oh, that's missing. Yeah, that's it.
I see that.
It's not TELDO. I apologize. That's just the contractor service, no, no. No, yes, it is. The first one is the TELDO. The first one is the TELDO.
Okay, so we've got two thousand in TELDO appropriation. You've encumbered seventeen oh three point nine. I'm sorry, yeah, three, I'm sorry. We've, we've encumbered fifteen ninety-one. We've spent fourteen oh nine, no, unencumbered, and we're at forty-six percent. So you're saying that you want to take that.
We're not adding more. What happened is the budget that was approved had a zero amount in there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And so what I'm doing is making this match the budget so when the auditors come in, to see that you guys approved the resolution. So it's already been done. I just need a resolution to cover it.
Got it.
Because we had to pay the bill because, you know, you saw that bill come in for five months.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm sorry, the first line was for fourteen oh one was for TELDO and the second line was for contractor services.
So this resolution is going to be increase the appropriation to three thousand dollars total?
Um, for, for the one line, yes, it's gone from zero to three thousand dollars.
Okay.
If you look at a resolution twelve dash oh, one, two, which is referencing this resolution, that line item currently has the budget you guys are supposed to have approved in the meeting, but you still need to sign, has zero in there. But we had to increase that line item to pay the bill for January through March. So I went on and put some money in UAM, but now I have to increase the budget to be three thousand dollars because that's what's in UAM. So I just need you to have a resolution to max that, uh, okay? And then on the second line, it's a similar situation. Um, the actions have already been done in UAM. We just need a resolution that shows it so the auditors can track it. You understand what I'm saying?
Right. What was that number one more time, Tracy?
Which one? The second one or the first one?
Second, second one.
Second one is two, one, 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 dash, two, two, oh, dash, three, six, oh, dash, zero, 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 zero.
Thank you.
It, it only had an original budget. It only has seven hundred and seventy in that line. And we increased it to three thousand. We're asking for an increase of three thousand.
Make sure.
And that's, I had that resolution here with me, so, and that would be twenty-one dash, um, and I'll put it in the memo, but that's oh, three, three. That one I have already written out. I've had it for a while. We just never got around to it. I've had to keep changing the date. So that's the only one I have.
Okay. All right. We have set all these resolutions up under new business. Trustees, do you have any other new business to discuss before we move on to resolutions?
No.
Okay, let's move on to resolutions. First resolution is resolution twenty-one dash zero, two, nine. This is to, uh, appropriate forty, move forty, transfer forty-eight thousand dollars to fund the zoning officer position where this forty-eight thousand will land in account one thousand, one, three, zero, one, ninety, zero, four, zero. I move to adopt.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mister Mann. Trustees, any questions?
You don't quite understand, we need to move forty-eight thousand for a job, and we're already in the sixth month, so.
I'm sorry, did we do twenty-one oh twenty-eight already, or we're on twenty-one oh twenty-nine? Which one are we talking right now?
Uh, I did twenty-one oh twenty-nine, we can go back to that.
Okay, so I want to make sure, no problem, okay, that's okay, I want to make sure I'm putting it on the record.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem, okay, this is twenty-nine, okay. I apologize, Mr. McGlaughlin.
That's all right.
Was there a question in there, Mr. McGlaughlin?
The same one I've asked before, just why we're putting forty, when it's six months, and why we're putting forty-eight thousand dollars in there for a guy's salary? I mean, and the fees and all that, we've been around, we, we, we've discussed it.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McGlaughlin.
Abstain.
Abstain. Two yeses, one abstain.
Okay, motion passes two, two to one, or two to abstain. All right, let's backtrack to twenty-one dash zero two eight. This is, uh, a resolution to transfer a total of seven thousand dollars. Into, uh, burial expense fund code one thousand, one two zero, five nine nine, three zero zero nine. I move to adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero two eight.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mann, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
McGuire. Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Okay, funding for burial expense, pass three zero. Okay, resolution twenty-one dash zero three zero. This is the transfer of nine thousand eighty-seven fifty to fund the code enforcement position. Where the money will go into account number one thousand, one three zero, one ninety, zero four, zero one. I move to adopt twenty-one dash zero three zero.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Any discussion?